Good morning. Welcome to the Tom Burke Technical Education Center. Your Board of Trustees appreciates your attendance this morning. This is our October 17, 2017 Board of Trustees meeting. I now call the meeting to order and ask that Stephen please approach the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now if we could have the students approach and Chef, come on up. And we were very privileged to have breakfast served to us. And Board, I think we all agree, it was scrumptilicious.
Delicious.
Well, good morning. I'm Chef Cheryl and Chef Richard's right down here. And then we have all of our students. Josie, and she's going to talk about the meal here in just a second. Leona, you go ahead. Leona, Naomi, Eileen, Aviana, Janay, Mallory, Chrissy, Stephen, and Cody. They are post-secondary students. They are in their final semester here at KC Community College. And they are proving to us that they can, they're ready to graduate. Josie created the menu this morning, so I'm going to let her, because I'm sure some people don't know what we serve, I'm going to let her tell you all what she created. It's brilliant and innovative.
Hi, like she said, I'm Josie. I, um, for my capstone, which is a big project at the end of the OAB, the honor to do, um, we get to create basically our own restaurant. We create a handbook, a menu, um, and one of my menu items I wanted to make for the capstone, we were talking about practicing it, and, um, my chef gave me the opportunity to cook it for you guys today, uh, which was amazing and I'm so grateful. It was called Twisted Benedict. It was a play on eggs Benedict. It is a cheesy cheddar waffle with a ploblano cream sauce topped with a poached egg and a red bell pepper aioli. Um, it was a lot of fun to make, a lot of fun to prepare for you guys. You guys are a lot of fun to cook for and be around. Thank you, uh, for this opportunity.
Josie, where do you plan on going after KC? Okay, assuming there's life after KC KCC.
Um, I do have big plans that I am determined to achieve. Um, for a long time I've always wanted to open up my own place, so I am going to business school after this. And then, uh, hoping to open up my own place in Colorado.
Oh, okay. Wow, thank you.
We also have a couple of other introductions. Chrissy, wave your hand. Chrissy, actually, we went to Nationals over the summer for Skills USA, which we did take five gold medals at the state level, which is the most anyone has ever accomplished in the industry. So, Chrissy actually placed sixth in the nation in restaurant service. And Stephen, raise your hand, placed 12th in the nation for baking production. So, we're really proud of our students. And we had more, and they placed anywhere from sixth to about, I think, 22nd. So, that's amazing in the nation. So, thank you for your support on that. We also had another student, he's not here right now, his name's Will Bowles. He went, he won the regional NAACP culinary competition. He went to Nationals in Maryland and took second in the nation. So, thank you all for your support. It wouldn't be possible without the support of, of course, the Board, all the staff, our Maisig Dean, Cliff Smith, um, thank you. And of course, the students for always helping each other. They were here at 6 o'clock this morning, so they probably need coffee more than I do. Thank you so much.
They were bright-eyed and very accommodating and I just really appreciated their attitudes. And, uh, thank you for giving us a very positive start to our morning. Appreciate you very much. Congratulations.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Brydentholz.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Garner.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Trustee Rios.
Here. Ask for approval of the agenda as amended.
Mr. Rios, I guess I have a question. Under the amended agenda, number 16, executive session.
Yes.
I'm wondering if that shouldn't be, it's an amendment to, uh, last month's Board meeting. And I'm just wondering if that shouldn't be under the consent agenda as an amendment to the minutes and not down in executive session.
Well, it really, it will be discussed in exec session and it is actually technically now unfinished business.
Yeah, but as far as the minutes are concerned of the work we did on September 17, I think...
Well, yes, the minutes do reflect what you're saying.
Yeah, and the executive, and what I'm saying is that the, uh, what we have under executive session is actually an amendment to those minutes. It seems to me like it ought to be under the approval of the minutes and consent agenda.
I don't understand.
I don't think it changes the fact that we're going to have some discussion around, uh, one of the items in, in, under executive session, an unfinished business. Um, so I'm going to move that we approve the agenda, uh, as printed with the exception of changing, uh, the matter under executive session number 16, moving it under the consent agenda as an amendment to the, uh, minutes of September 17, 2017.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Thank you. At this time, anyone wishing to address the Board of Trustees, please step forward to the microphone, give your name and address, and say your piece. No one wishes to speak to the Board of Trustees? Oh, I know you all want to speak to us, but, okay. Hearing nine, we will now go to Board Committee reports. Any reports, any committee? No, all right. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes minutes from September 17, minutes of October 9, approval of recommendations of the September bills and the August visa bills, and approval of the human resources personnel items.
I'm of approval with the amendment to the, uh, September 17, 2017 Board meeting.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Thank you. We now have the Student Senate report. Student President Gary, oh, no, we have a sub. All right.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Tamisha. I'm the Vice President of KC KCC Student Senate.
Well, welcome.
Hello. I'm here for Gary's behalf since he has class this morning.
Okay, all right.
Um, we had a blood drive. We have sign-ups for September the 20th to September the 21st at the Pioneer Center and the main campus. We held our, um, we held it on the same date, September the 20th to the 21st. We held a blood mini resource fair at the Pioneer Center, September the 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We served approximately 22 students. Six community exhibitors participated in the fair. And the main campus, um, held a blood drive on September the 27th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and we served about 35 students. Each student saved about three lives, so that's about 105 people. Um, Student Senate meeting, uh, we hosted on October the 4th. There were about 24 clubs and organizations who attended the meeting. We had the YCO Candidate Forum on Tuesday, October the 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. The forum consisted of KC KCC Board members, of trustees, commissioners, mayors, and sheriffs. We had approximately 130 students, staff, and faculty and community members in attendance. Uh, lunch was served to all those who attended. Student Senate had three students who attended the college study meeting on October, October the 5th, and 2, 2:00 p.m. and 4, 4:00 p.m. We have, um, we're, we're planning the candlelight ceremony to be held on December the 6th. We would love to invite you to join us. This year's theme will be legacy. Um, we have upcoming events, which is Student Leadership Institute workshops, which are, which are held, um, on various days throughout the fall semester, the Learning Commons Think Tank. We have the Alice Training, October the 24th, from noon, 1:00 p.m. in the Upper Jewel. Then we have the three-on-three basketball, um, October the 20, the 20, the 22nd, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And we have, um, Kids Halloween Party, Thursday, October the 26th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. We would love to, for you guys to, uh, join us. We have, um, the Mascot Tryouts on October the 31st, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the Lower Jewel in the Student Center. And then we have another Student Senate meeting, October the 18th, November the 1st, in the Lower Jewel, Student Center, from 2:15 p.m. to 3:15 p.m. Thank you for letting us have the opportunity to speak.
Oh, thank you. Ah, full agenda there.
Um, I'd like to thank the Student Senate particularly for hosting the forum for the candidates. It was very well done. It was a good turnout. Um, and especially your efforts toward encouraging people to register to vote and to register and get involved in the electoral process. Um, I don't know if it was Benjamin Franklin or who it was, one of those guys back there, said, you know, you get the government, you participate in. And so, it's important to participate in the process. And every vote does count. It does matter. And so, I want to thank you for your efforts to do that, especially as it relates to getting people registered and getting involved in voting. Well done.
Yes, all right.
Great job.
Thank you. All right, well, now ready for the College President's report.
And she has one. Beginning with an update on the Chief Human Resource Officer process, yesterday we had two finalists on campus. We put them through their paces, a meeting with Extended President's Cabinet, a meeting with the HR Department, an open forum, and a second interview with the Search Committee. The Search Committee is meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. It will carefully consider the feedback from the open forums and from the Extended Cabinet and HR meetings. It will make a decision. And then pending a successful background check, we will announce our new Chief Human Resource Officer. So, shout out for that. Uh, the next search, uh, will be for the Chief Financial Officer. We have posted the announcement. Uh, we have assembled a Search Committee. And within the job posting, we have said that review of applications will begin on November 1. So, I'm not sure we'll be able to announce the successful finalist by the November Board meeting. We'll make every effort to do so, but it's important to get the right person on board to replace. And actually, there is no replacing Bob Layton, uh, but we will come as close as we can to that. And while we're on the theme of search processes, an update on the presidential search process, the Board had a work session on October 9th facilitated by a search consultant, Dr. Larry Ebers, who has conducted over 100 searches for community college presidents. Uh, the notes of that meeting are in the Board book, the Board Minutes. Uh, and he was very helpful in helping the Board, um, reflect on best practices. And my takeaway from Board discussion is it is fully committed to an inclusive process that involves the internal community and the external community from the get-go. And I was charged with the task of identifying a small number of potential search firms to help manage the process. And as I have done my research, I've identified three. ACCT, the American Governing Board, and typically they do searches for four-year universities. But they did do in Portia State's most recent presidential search. And Dr. Ebers recommended that we look at them because they do some community college searches. And he actually knows some of the senior leaders at HGB and highly recommended them. And then the Poly Group. Uh, and the Poly Group has conducted a number of successful community college searches. So, those three. And then we do have a proposal from a local consultant that the Board should review. And my understanding is that the Chair is going to appoint a subcommittee of the Board to interview these search firms and then to make a recommendation to the full Board.
Not to interrupt, but to just go with the flow, I have, uh, for the Search Committee interviews, as Trustees Ash and Brown will, uh, conduct those with staff. And then the Job Description Committee, uh, which would include the Extended Cabinet of the President, and then, uh, Trustees Daniels and Garner will be on, uh, the Job Description Subcommittee. So, uh, those will begin their, uh, work and proceed. Okay?
And who did you say on those search firm interviews? Dawn and?
Roz.
Thank you. The other thing I think it's important for everyone in the room to, to understand is, while it is really the task of the new Board to select the President, there is much that can be done in the fall to get ready to actually launch the search and, and in fact, launch it. And one of the first things that Larry Ebers advised the Board do is review the job description. And that would be followed by a series of listening sessions. And during those listening sessions, that's, the Board will listen to what, um, the internal and external community constituents believe is needed for its next new permanent leader. And then the Board will use that feedback to build the Board, the presidential profile. The next step then will be to post the profile and the position announcement. And there's no reason to think we cannot get all of that done before the end of the fall semester. And the timing would really be good on that because it gives the presidential candidates time over the winter or Christmas break to get their materials ready and submitted.
Yes.
So, comments, additions, questions from the Board?
I do have a question. What is the process you're using to recruit members from the community to be a part of this listening project, which I think is very important? I applaud you for doing that.
Well, Dr. Ebers, in my opinion, gave great advice. And the first was invite anybody and everybody to come. Post the listening sessions. Do not, do not make it exclusive. Make it inclusive. Uh, and when asked about whether there should be a set of listening sessions for the external community and one for the internal, he recommended you blend them. Uh, the other thing that he suggested that in my opinion seemed to be a good idea, but of course, it's up to the Board, was reaching out to organizations and saying, may we have 15 minutes on your agenda to, to share our search process and to gain your feedback?
Wonderful. Thank you.
Another question?
I'd just like to, uh, applaud, um, the President on her leadership. In past meetings, I gave a, a call to action that, uh, that she take a hard look at, um, embracing, um, our institution's commitment to diversity and inclusion. And, um, she's reassured me as well as in her actions and words, um, that she has sought out competent, capable, and qualified candidates, uh, for consideration for some of these job openings. So, I just want to say thank you in, in upholding, uh, those values.
Dr. Vili, um, you said Poly, ACCT, and what was the third group?
Um, it's called HGB, American, American, or Association of Governing Boards.
Okay.
And I will, now that I know who's on the Subcommittee, I will send you a profile of each of those and then work with you to get a time that we can set up interviews. And I, those of course would be telephone interviews. Uh, and we can think through the questions we want to pose to each of them.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the next update, just to make sure that it's on at least Trustee Ash's calendar, we do, our next, next KACC, quarterly meeting will be in December at Cali. And I can tell it's on your radar screen.
Yep.
Okay, oh, good. A quick update on the job classification study. I have visited with the Board. I have visited with President's Cabinet, Extended Cabinet, and the Senate's about the need to review our job descriptions, make sure they are current, and then to classify them according to some kind of system. Uh, I have reached out to, uh, an entity with an office in Kansas City formerly called the Hay Group. Both Bob Layton and I have had very positive experiences in working with them and other institutions. It's now called Corn Fairy, uh, but we are in the initial discussion phase of, uh, launching that classification study. And the contact at Corn Fairy, Cheryl Mickles, has asked for all of our job titles. And the cool nerds in IT were able to produce it like that. So, I have sent the job titles that way. Uh, and I anticipate that the next step will be training for supervisors in terms of how to write job descriptions. And I envision a consistent template across the institution. Uh, then those job descriptions will be reviewed and classified, and that will help us develop consistent salary ranges across the Board, not only for existing employees, but also for new hires. So, that's an update on that. Next, uh, policy review process. We're still trying to get our arms around that. That's, that's a Herculean task. I have defined it as being bigger than the proverbial bread basket. Uh, but I am hopeful next week to have a conversation with a retired Executive Vice President from another community college who might be willing to take on this project in terms of project management. And last, into the homestretch, at your places, you do have information on the ACCT Federal Legislative Summit. It is held every year in Washington, D.C. in February. The dates for the coming year are February 11th through the 14th. And I really encourage this Board to send some representatives to that because it's the best way to get a handle on the federal issues that impact not only community colleges across the country, but also on KC KCC. And it gives you the opportunity to call on our congressional leaders. So, comments or...
We did, uh, have a discussion, uh, about that. And, uh, if I remember correctly, Dawn and Roz and you, uh, will be attending that legislative, uh, session. And so, Peggy, if you would be so kind as to, uh, begin the arrangements, because I know there's a little discount if we...
Register early.
Register early. So, uh, we are, we are planning to have attendance to that.
And once again, I, I would like us to have a conversation or at least consider that we take a student with us as well, um, if we, we feel like we can find a way to do that.
And that's, I will get, uh, if you would, uh, have the Student Senate, um, discuss that and see if someone, uh, the dates and so forth will be shared. And if somebody can, uh, avail themselves, then we would certainly welcome that.
If it works out, it, you know, I've seen other colleges do it, it's very effective.
Okay, all right.
That's a great suggestion. I do have a question for Trustee Ash. I assume you went last year. Does...
I did not, because I was on quarantine, but Wendell and Roz went last year.
Right, Wendell and Roz.
Um, I do know in the past, before I retired from Butler, the Kansas Community College system put together, uh, an aggregate list of the federal dollars that flow into our state for students in terms of Pell Grants, loans, et cetera. It, do, is that a current practice or not?
Yes.
Great.
I, I think we'll probably discuss that at, um, Neosho. We're in Neosho in December, right? Chanute?
I was thinking it was Cali. Let me find out.
Yeah, I think it's Chanute.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm sure we'll discuss that.
Good.
Uh, there and then firm, you know, firm that up so we can have the accurate data for February.
Great. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, just to, uh, very briefly, I, I do want to reassure, uh, the campus and general communities of the transparency that this Board, uh, is determined to have in regard to the, uh, national presidential search. It was alluded there will be a Search Committee. Uh, that body, uh, will potentially be made up of, uh, two Board members, two faculty members, two students, two administration, two staff, and five from the broader community. That Search Committee would be the ones then that would be, uh, looking into the applicants and narrowing that field down. Uh, it would be, uh, the newly elected, um, Board that would, uh, select the new President. And, uh, we are hoping for a spring, uh, announcement, but, uh, again, that would be shored up after January, uh, when the new Board, um, takes, um, its, um, position and is able to review the process. We will be in communication throughout this, uh, coming months of November and December when, uh, there's a election on November 7. And, uh, so on November 8, we will know who, uh, the new, uh, Trustees are. And we will, um, work with our attorney to make sure we, uh, do everything appropriately, but to include, uh, those newly elected members as much as possible, uh, in the information and in the process. So, I do want to make sure that that is clear to everyone, that we are moving forward, but we are wanting it to be as inclusive a process as possible. Uh, please be looking. We will, uh, have things posted on the website, uh, to continually update, um, as developments occur, uh, throughout, uh, the process. And especially when we have the listening, listening sessions, uh, you know, we want as many, uh, individuals from the internal and external community to, uh, participate and to be able, uh, to give their, uh, input. So, um, I think that kind of summarizes, um, the process, uh, along with what the President has already shared with you. Uh, each Board meeting, uh, in November and December, we will also... Each board meeting in November and December, we will also continue to provide you with a summary of what is happening. All right. We're now ready for the marketing and community outreach report.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So at your seats, and I apologize, you did receive this late this month, that was my error, but you do have a copy of the entire report for you. I just want to highlight a couple of things. First, a new donor legacy project that the foundation is working on, and Debbie Cowick has spearheaded this project. We are finding it very necessary, and we're very excited to start collecting the biographies and photos of our donors, as well as the scholarship honoree, if there is, if it's not the donor themselves, so that we can collect a history of our scholarships and have this to move forward with the foundation. So we're starting that, we're going to kick it off at this year's candle lighting, which is December the 6th. So Debbie has contacted our current scholarship donors, starting to collect biographies, photos to put together this legacy project. So we're excited about that, and we'll give you updates as we move that forward. Also, the new style guide I talked about last month is completed. I have sent that forward to the cabinet to get vetted, and then we'll, we'll be shared with the Extended Cabinet and then the Senate, so you'll see that rolling out here shortly once it goes through that entire process. And underneath there, you see the KC, KCC Pride, that very small ad. That's a sample of what the new style guide and ads will look like moving forward. And that particular ad is out right now on Facebook and LinkedIn, I'm sorry, Twitter, Facebook and Twitter. And it's just a simple shout-out saying, you know, "Attend KC, KCC, get your degree and save, you know, thousands of dollars on your tuition." So that's just a sample of the new style guide format. We also are working on a redesign of the college website. Matt Fowler and I are co-chairing that. We had our first team meeting a couple weeks ago, and we have reached out to faculty, staff, and students for input for this new website redesign. So that will start moving forward. Sorry, I don't know what I did. And then this Friday, we are really excited. Any NASCAR fans in the room? NASCAR fans? We are going to have Jamie McMurray, I guess, hopefully there's someone out here, number one, car, car number one. He will be making a Mick delivery to our Auto Tech program between 9:00 and 10:00 AM. It's part of the McDonald's and Uber Eats. So McDonald's will start offering delivery through Uber Eats. So we are going to have Jamie McMurray on campus at the Auto Tech this Friday from 9:00 to 10:00. So I think that's going to be just awesome. Da-da-da-da-da. Okay. So those are just the highlights. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Well, I appreciate the written summary. Thank you very much for that, and appreciate your efforts on behalf of the college.
Happy to do it.
I got a question real quick.
Okay.
So close.
The website, do you have a timeline for completion that you're shooting for?
Could Matt speak to that perhaps, the timeline?
And if you would, maybe some enhancement improvements that you're working on?
Enhancements or improvements?
Enhancement improvements that we can expect.
For the timeline, we're looking at 24th of May, 2018. So it's in between the end of spring semester and the summer semester to minimize as much disruption as possible. But we hope to have kind of the beta test, the testing website available to see during the spring semester, so we can get feedback and just hone it as best as we can. And some of the enhancements is kind of a built-in faculty directory, faculty staff directory that includes photos, a course catalog that will be able to, you know, they'll be able to sort through the catalog much easier than what we currently have. And they were talking about like an emergency module, notification module, and we've got to look and see how that works. But it allows a lot more customization, a lot more flexibility. And one of the goals is to have the department heads or the chairs of the departments kind of update some of the material on the websites. So instead of all the information coming to web services, they can just update the, like, the hours of their department, the contact information, so they don't necessarily have to go to web services all the time to do, do that kind of update. And one of the benefits with this is that we're spending, you know, a little bit each year on CMS, but it'll allow us to kind of keep it up-to-date, modern, and flexible, unlike our current one, which is rigid and already out of date.
Thank you.
You have a question then also? All that's for internal use, will there be any differences for the community or people outside the college when they want to walk on, will eat? Will there be anything in the website that's going to be different for those people?
So one of the areas that, one of the main sections that we're working on is a community section. That's where we're going to house, kind of link to the foundation, you know, the arts and entertainment section. So we kind of bring out, you know, hey, we're doing, we have theater, we have jazz. So we're building out kind of a bigger community section, so, you know, when people come to our website, they'll see what we can offer to help the community and, you know, improve it.
Great, thank you.
That's going to be very important, because one of the things that has been shared with trustees through the years is it's difficult for community members to navigate our website. And in particular, kind of hard to find foundation information, which kind of counterintuitive to what we're wanting to achieve. So hopefully, having a, a community section, I'm calling it, I'm sure there's some techie term for it, but-
Section.
Just where it says community, and they can click on that, and then they have all the things that are available to them as an external community, I think would be very handy, and would actually increase participation.
Yeah, that, since we're a community college, it's critical that we have that section built out. So that's one of the goals.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. All right, any other questions? Well, again, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Tammy.
All right. We're now ready for the Vice President of Academic Affairs report. There are two presentations, Ms. Marks and Ms. Perry, please be ready for your presentations.
As a matter of fact, that's what I was going to do, actually. I've submitted the report to you on the Vice President of Academics area, and I would like to ask them to come up and give their presentations first, and then I'll ask, answer any questions you might have on the report.
All right, let's have Ms. Marks come first.
Yep. Sorry, she's here, but she'll be here in a second.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Marks. I am the owner of Naturally Designed. I came back to school back in 2009 after I raised my children, and I thought it was time for me. At that time, I was part of Cultivating Kansas City with Catherine Kelly Grassroots and a couple other organizations like Catha Charities. I worked with them as their former market manager on Sixth and Tyrone. I stayed very instrumental with them in the community. I started a couple of neighborhood watch groups, Mount Zion, Pleasant Green, through community policing. I felt that was very rewarding, and so I kind of combined Cultivating Kansas City and what I do here with Naturally Design on campus at Kansas City Kansas Community College.
My name is Isaac Young. I'm Vice President of Natural Designs. Natural Designs was one of the first programs I was introduced to when I came to Kansas City Kansas Community College. And what really attracted me to the program was it was all about naturalness and organic, something I really never knew about growing up, because living in the city, it's not a whole lot of opportunities that you're able to get fresh produce or even be around the garden. So that was a real eye-opener. I'm not going to lie, at first, I wasn't kind of used to that type of food, because I never really had the natural stuff. I'm used to the stuff that you get out the stores. And if you didn't know, there's a big difference between the two. It's a big difference in the taste, because it's not all those chemicals and preservatives. It took getting used to, but once I grasped the concept, I just realized how much better I felt after eating the natural stuff versus eating the store-bought stuff. Not only did we learn about gardening, we also learned how to preserve stuff that we got from the garden through canning. And I never knew the process of canning things. It's, it's quite a process, and a lot of this information you could carry with you for the rest of your life. They ask Mama Marks to volunteer for the cooking, because everybody loves her cooking, just always willing to help, and she doesn't even want nothing in return. She just likes to see you eat her food or pay, give her a smile and tell you thank you. That's all that's required. The meetings usually take place on Friday at 1:00. We go over a variety of things each, each time, and a lot of people don't know that you could eat flowers and vegetables and fruit is what prevents cancerous cells, and it helps you to eliminate the toxins in your body. Like, it's just so many amazing things that eating natural could do for your body, and I wouldn't have ever knew these things if it wasn't for Mama Marks and Natural Designs.
By me being the former market manager on Sixth and Tyrone a few years back, about four years back, I also was taking classes. So I would close down the market on Wednesdays and pay the vendors, and I would buy something from each vendor. I thought it was a fair, nice way of supporting you. And I would come out here to the college and bring vegetables and fruit, and I know that there was this place called the Intercultural Center that a lot of students were able to find food. So I said, well, I'll start leaving salads in here, and I would run off to class, and I would come back, and the salads weren't ate, but they also started showing up early to see how they were made. With that being said, I was asked by Jennifer to do the brown bag, and that was in 2012. We start talking about bringing a former market here at the college, and with the help of my advisor, Curtis Smith, and Rachel Pollak, the director over at Grassroots at Catha Charities, we walked out with a date of June 6, and this is our third year's room. With kids on campus, I was an instructor this summer, and it felt good to me to teach kids from 6 to 16, right here on this campus, how they can go out there, put their hands in that dirt. And in my mind, I'm thinking how wonderful it is for kids to help feed other kids. I thank God every day that he gives me the ability to get up and continue to help people as much as I can, because little do you know, a lot of the students around here are just simply hungry. But if you can teach them how to suffice in their own life, instead of picking up a dollar or two bag of noodles, you know, you can get a couple potatoes, even a five-pound bag for two or three dollars, and you can eat a lot healthier, and it'll last a lot longer. I do know that I am in the middle of working with Alvin Gunor and Alicia Hooks and other people, remember Marissa Gray and Curtis Smith, definitely, my advisor. I want to open a restaurant in Wyandotte County. I was born and raised in Wyandotte County, worked for the airline as an executive most of those years, for 20 years, and now my life is important to come back and do something right here in Wyandotte County where I was born and raised. So Natural Design, I see continuing on. Even once I open my restaurant, it'll be called a pot from the die. And when I'm not on campus, helping students with Naturally Design, because I will never forget where I came from. And my restaurant on Saturdays, they'll be able to come out, get their hands in the dirt, come in, cook the food, and we'll open to the public, and we'll feed anybody, rich or poor. Thank you. With that being said, I want to thank some people that are here today formally. Shai Perry, can you come up for a minute? I've been to the Makers Fair twice by way of Marissa Gray Hooks, I mean, Marissa Gray and Alicia Hooks. This school sent me to represent an entrepreneur atmosphere. And in 2015, I got my feet wet, but it was very rewarding, and I learned a lot. So when I went back in 2017, I walked away with a Makers of Merit Ribbon Award. So with that, I took it home and I put it on my dresser, and I looked at it, and it didn't mean nothing to me, because I didn't get there by myself. So I decided to give it back to the college, and Shai Perry made it all nice and pretty for me. She's good. And it says, "Presented to Kansas City Kansas Community College from Naturally Design, Carolyn Marks, in honor of Dr. Marissa Gray, Barbara Clark Evans..." She puts up with a lot with me. "Alicia Hooks," and last but not least, my advisor, Curtis Smith. I don't know where we're going to keep it. Shai has been in, put in charge of that. So I'll let her tell you that, and she's up next to speak. And I just wanted to say again, thank you all for supporting me and allowing me to do what I love. The things I do here, the most rewarding thing that I can leave you with is, you will never be able to learn from a book.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your efforts with our students, and I'm probably one of those that need to be listening more to your lessons. I eat a lot of desserts.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, I'm nervous.
Oh, no, you don't need to be nervous.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and ask Shai to come up and give you a-
Okay.
-brief overview on the art gallery. And in part of that, I have a form that I just received and realized that there's a resolution that would need to go with that, and I don't know how to handle that, so I'm going to hand that to you, so you can take a look at that as well. And we already approved it? All right, we'll have the President read it.
All right, you ready? Hello, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, I'm Shai Perry, and I'm going to give you the year-end review report from the art gallery. I don't know how to work this. Which one, what button is this? Sounds okay? I think it's the bottom one. Yep, I got it, sorry. So in the last year, we have seen a significant increase in participants in the art gallery. Our first event last year, the first gallery reception, we had 23 people. Our first event in August of this year, at the Paint Throwdown, we had 265. We have also reached out into the rest of the college to support our students in education and show them how art can transform and help educate everyone. The psychology classes have particularly been back to the art gallery time and time again. For this show last March, Unspoken Violence, this- For this show last March, Unspoken Violence, this artist spoke to the classes about how his artwork and the other artists he's worked with psychologically involves things about child abuse and domestic violence. In this class, this was last week, our visiting artist Andrew Norris came to speak with the students about how his childhood and things that influenced him now influences his artwork. He also spoke with the painting class about their development. He said that was his favorite part of being here, was getting to help the art students develop their artwork and just give them any pointers that he could. They really enjoyed that process. That's the first time we've done that, so that was really amazing. And then we also were invited over here to the tech center to speak with the cosmetology class. That was really fun, talking to them about how art on a canvas relates to how they create their art for hair design and nail design. Also, in education in the art gallery, we have Miracle Mayo, she's our intern. And with her education, I really want her to experience things outside of the classroom, not just inside the classroom and inside the gallery. The picture on the left there, we are at UNKC Art Gallery. And here's some pictures of us at First Friday, just going into our studios. She's a really quiet person, so I tell her, "Just go up there and speak to the artist about his artwork." And she is a little bit quiet at first, but then she has broken out of her shell in the last year. And the other picture we took, we got a private tour of the Belger Art Center. The man sitting at the table, that's actually a sculpture. And that is in their private dining room. So we got to go back and see stuff that they don't have in the museum. And then the guy giving the thumbs up, that's Mo, the curator there. We've become friends over the last few months, so that was a really fun trip. This is some of the people and partners that we've worked with over the last year, being Naturally Designed, of course. FBOE, AAUW Student Chapter, Planet Sub, Studio Seven, Fine Arts, just a few of the groups that we've worked with. Here's them receiving the award. And also, I've been working with Junior Achievements. We did their job shadowing day. The students came to the art gallery and I told them, you know, what it means to be a curator, what it means to be an artist. We really just had a conversation about that. And then we went into Media Services and they got to play with Randy with the green screen. That was really fun. They enjoyed pretending they were newscasters. And then Naturally Designed fed them lunch and showed them around the gallery. It was, they were about 12 to 14 years of age, so not quite in high school yet, but, you know, I told them about after high school, "Why don't you come over and come to college here?" And then the opening day of the farmers markets, I set up a table with some of my personal artwork, just to have some art out there and enjoy the festivities and tell them about the art gallery. I've become really close with the YP Forward Group. I'm on their steering committee for the KCK Chamber. And here, we have got to go to so many different events that they've hosted. And that's me and Miracle at the recent event, the Best in KCK. That was really fun. And just get to meet all of the different members of the KCK Chamber and meet new businesses and tell them about the school and the gallery. Our event, Paint Throwdown, which I mentioned earlier, was a really big success. This event came together after I spoke with Andrika about her 12 days of back to school and what I could present for that. So I made a mini art fair. We had DJ Joe out there. Naturally Design was doing food. We have food from Planet Subs. We had three artists who volunteered to come out and work on their art and do demos for the students. That's Polly. And we had Darrell Taylor doing print. He's actually an alumni of our college. And then Billy Peters, who's come back really several times. And then this time, he came back and did live drawings, I believe, the top ones of Gary and his drawing. You're in there. And then our event we had in September for the Latin American Independence Day celebration, this was in conjunction with several different groups. My part of that was to bring to Mexican-American artists, Baldomir Rivas and Eric Felix, who are from California. They moved here a couple of years ago to go to the Art Institute and recently graduated. And so they came and did these wonderful drawings and prints. And we had live music and lots of food. It was a lot of fun. Oh, that's Gary dancing. Yeah.
Or some facsimile there.
And then also, we have, it's called Me Time. It's just a time for students to come and chill out in the art gallery's relaxing environment. That's one of the tutors from the Learning Commerce, N'Koya. She taught meditation on this day. And Heidi English brought her psychology class to let them experience in the event. Our latest event was Diversity in Contemporary America. This is a show that I began curating last October. JT Daniels, he's an alumni of the college. He's become really popular around Kansas City. Has anyone been on the Streetcar downtown? Well, he did the artwork for The Stops. So, and then he's also worked with Arts KC. But when I saw his work, I, it's very about comics and very abstract, but also with realism with the people that he draws. So I paired him with Andrew Norris, who was the visiting artist last week that spoke with the classes. And here's just some pictures from that event. They both gave wonderful lectures about their artwork and how it relates to the topic of For the future, we're going to be hosting a few different groups. We've already hosted the YP Forward Group. I'd like to have them back again. Women's in the Art Networking Group, Young Black KC and KC Curly. And then some of our upcoming events will be some demos, teaching students how to frame their own artwork, just little drawing demos. And our biggest event will be November 16th, that is the Paint Night, which Ed gave you the flyer for. That will just be taught by an instructor. You'll be able to paint your own pieces. If you'd like to get a ticket for that event, just let me know. And that's it. Thank you.
Really appreciate your efforts with our art gallery. Trustee back in the 90s, Hunter, you know, was one that advocated for art and started purchasing pieces, some of the sculptures that are on our campus, because of the board's interest at that time. Interestingly, though, they were buying, then they were just storing the artwork. It was not displayed. It wasn't available to the general public. And, you know, you have to have things on display. You have to allow people to experience in order for them to learn and then appreciate other aspects of life. And it is important for a learning institution to be more than just about books, but experiences, as we have had in the presentation today, with food, now art, are all as essential to the existence of the human experience as is general learning. And so your efforts are very, very important to the totality of the learning experience here at the Kansas City Kansas Community College. And for that, I am expressing our gratitude and something that started literally a few decades ago, but you have had it flourish. And I'm sure there's even more good things to come in the future. Thank you. At this time, the president will read a resolution about the November 16 event.
A resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA 41-719D. Whereas Kansas statute sanitated 41-719D prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property except where expressly permitted by law. And whereas the Kansas City Kansas Community College parentheses, KCKCC, is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA 41-719D, specified property which is under the control of the KCKCC Board of Trustees and which is not used for classroom instruction. Now therefore, be it resolved by the KCKCC Board of Trustees, Section 1, exemption November 16th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The requested exempted area is the deli and art gallery area from the requirement of KSA 41-719D. Section 2, this exemption is granted in connection with the KCKCC Art Gallery Paint Night, passed and approved by the Board of Trustees of KCKCC in a meeting held on October 17th, 2017.
Motion to approve.
It's all move.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. I'll be honored to sign this.
Thank you very much for that. And that concludes my report, since you have the written portion with you. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to...
There's nothing you wish to highlight yourself?
No.
Okay. Are there any questions? Motion to accept the Vice President of Academic Affairs report.
It's all move. Thank you very much.
It's moved as second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Kramer. Dean of Enrollment and Student Services report, Dr. Wilson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have, you have in front of you the full student affairs report for the month. I want to take just a few minutes to highlight just a couple of items. One in particular is just to share my appreciation with Tammy and her team, in particular Taylor, our new graphic design person, who did a fantastic job updating our student code of conduct. The way that, the format that they're using now is a lot, it's user-friendly in a sense. It's online. Students are able to click on it and go to whatever page they need to go to in a matter of seconds, just to get the information that they need to know about the code of conduct, the appeal process. And we're going to work with her team to do the same thing for the student handbook. So Tammy, thank you. I think that's a great asset to have, that service on campus.
Did she pay you to say that?
Did who? I'm sorry. She did. She's been sitting there the whole time, passing me dollar bills. The next thing I wanted to share was the athletics department. All of our student athletes participated in additional Title IX training last month. I appreciate Linda Warner and Jennifer with our Counseling and Advocacy Office for putting this event together. This was in addition to the regular Title IX online training that the students athlete do, but it's more of a hands-on way. It gives them an opportunity to ask questions and to be involved, so I appreciate them doing this. We're going to continue to do some face-to-face training, hopefully using their help, for just open to any student who would like to attend those type of training. So we'll have some dates out here in the very near future. And then the final thing I would like to bring up is that our admissions department is going to host a few additional enrollment opportunities in November and in April. These are Saturday dates and it's a way to open up some additional dates for our students, hopefully to be able to enroll earlier in the semester and to select their classes earlier. They're also going to do something that's called Final Fridays. Final Fridays, and there's a couple of dates, October 27, February 23, March 30, and April 27. That's when the Enrollment Management Student Services offices are going to welcome students or host students who want to come on campus and share information about our enrollment process, answer questions that they might have, let them, you know, do a tour, et cetera. So that concludes my report, unless you have some questions.
Give us a summary of your enrollment comparison report, if you would. There's quite a bit of data that you shared. I am appreciative of that. But if you could give a synopsis.
Okay, sure. And I'm actually going to let either Stephen Terry or Tina share with you the information on the enrollment report.
All right, a tag-team effort. Okay, I love it.
Team effort. Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
All right. So as you know, I have Tina Church-Luwandowski here. She's our Director of Admissions and First Year Experience Program for our SOAR and our Orientation Program over the summer. And so, as you can see there in your report, we've had some great accomplishments around enrollment. And certainly, everyone understands that enrollment is not just one team. It's everyone here that puts together work to really make this happen. You can see there on your report, our 20th-day information, that's important for us to look at, is provided from our Institutional Effectiveness Team. And you can see there that we're not only up in credit hours, but headcount as well. And that's across the board for KCKCC. Of note there, that you can see a highlight there, is that Pioneer Center, for the first time in a while, is actually up in credit hour generation there. And you can see that. And that's due to a lot of the work that our team is doing and Tina's team around the Leavenworth area with increased visits to high schools, continuing to build the relationships up there in the Leavenworth area and getting students excited about the Pioneer Services Center and the Pioneer Center and the services that they offer. And so, that was one of the charges that you gave to us last year, is to focus a little bit more on Leavenworth and try to get into that community some more. So you can see that there. Regarding events...
So on Leavenworth, if you would, please. Speak to the new activities that you engaged in, getting more students to enroll.
Sure.
And then are we sustaining those or are we growing them?
So one of the big things that we've done over the last year is a lot of relationship and community building. And Dr. Wilson and I actually met with Dr. Roeth and his team, the superintendent up in Leavenworth, and his team of administrators about how we can be more engaged and how we can invite those students to come over to the Pioneer Center. And then also, working with Dr. Kramer and his team on how we can offer more of the Perkins courses and the non-tiered programs as well. And so, working through that process and a lot of relationship building and just letting them know that we're there to support them in the ways that they need. There's been some challenges in the past around the Leavenworth community with the move from the old center to the new one. And so, again, it's a lot of that relationship building and a lot of letting them know that we're there to serve them. We've worked with bus schedules to make sure that students were able to get in. They come in twice a day to drop off students and pick them up. We have opportunities on that installation where they can eat for lunch.
Steve, question. Have you met with Lansing School District also? I know the logistics issues are bigger with Lansing and we don't seem to have gotten many students from there in the past, but that should be a pretty good location for them, though.
Lansing's relatively small for us right now in enrollment numbers, but we have worked with them. I know Tina's team has worked with them in getting out to the Lansing School District. Dr. Kramer and I also worked with them through our high school enrollment dual partnership program, so that we can explore opportunities to be able to provide more technical programs and non-tiered courses there as well.
Yeah, great. Thank you. To make we forget about them, kind of sit out there close to Leavenworth, I think.
I would like for Tina to actually share our visits. So last year, when Dr. Wilson and I first met with you, one of the questions that she had is about how many visits we're doing out in the community and how many high schools we're getting to and things like that. And so, in sharing the story of KCKCC. So I'd like Tina to share the good news with you about the number of visits and how they've increased over the last year.
Thank you. So last year, from September to December, our events, and this includes high school events as well as community events, and I don't have them broken down by the differences, we attended 30 different events. This year, from September until December, we are anticipating 92 events. And as we find out about more events and people share those events with us, we're happy to add those to our schedule. So this is not the only events we're planning to attend. This is what we have scheduled as of now.
Wonderful.
Something else to highlight around our service to the community and increase in our enrollment... in enrollment is the great work that Mary Dorr and our Student Financial Services Team are doing, and Mary's here, and her team. They do tremendous work around making sure that our high schools know how to complete a FAFSA properly and how families can know. And Mary's done probably more than 30 or 40 visits at high schools throughout the year and her team, where they actually go in the evenings and meet with families and help them fill out the FAFSA for information. And you can see there on the report there that we've provided you, our institutional aid dollars and how many students that we're serving so that they have the opportunity to be able to come here and be able to afford to go to KCKCC. And so I'd give a shout out to Mary, and that's a very important thing that they do out in the community to be able to help students.
Thank you, Mary.
That's another thing that we're doing.
Back there, wave, wave. There you go. Always do stellar work. We appreciate you.
So at the end of the day, one of the numbers that you'd like to see is that right now, compared to the same time last year, we're up, but we also have a buffer for the end of the term. So if you look at today or the 20th day data for us, our enrollment versus where we were at last year, right now we're 3% up on numbers, but if we finish out the semester strong, which we hope to, we could be somewhere after enrollments for spring and looking even early open enrollment for summer, we could be anywhere between a 3 and a 5% increase. And that's really what we're shooting for. And last year, we gave you the goal of being 2% up. This year, we've met that goal and we're going to continue to work with the team and increase.
We like that. Very good. Very important. We have to meet our goals, believe me, people. It's very important. Yes, thank you so much.
What other questions can we answer for you folks? And Tina and Mary are certainly here.
I was, I'll have you work with the President, but one of the things, when you spoke of access and so forth, was the U-PASS program. It was something that the Board worked very hard on and negotiated stellar terms compared to neighboring institutions, but serviced Leavenworth. And that is probably something that needs continual efforts around so that those students may also be benefactors and that. So I just want you to be cognizant that the Board is aware of that and we would appreciate anything that we can do to assist in getting the attention of our partners to see if we can address that, you know, moving forward.
Let us know how we can help.
Yeah, I think we can't overstate the importance of, you know, the work, Mary's work and her team. I mean, listen, all institutions say, listen, we're here, we want you to come here and we'll help you, you know? When we take the service to them, that's making a whole nother statement. That's saying, no, we really want you. We really want you. I know it's more work and, but there are a lot of people that, listen, I did the FAFSA thing this fall myself and this past summer with my son and all that, and the people at the institution were great. It's another institution, it's not this one, but if they would have come to me, I would have been, you know, elated to say, wow, they really do, they really do want us. And so, I don't think we can overstate the importance of that. That's phenomenal.
And that's a new culture really for our area and for our college. Not only is Mary going out to high school, but we have faith going out there to help with testing. We have Mary Kobe Peterson going out there to help them enroll in their classes. Our success advisors actually go to the schools and will sit down and help a student go through that enrollment process. So we are taking the services to the students.
That's outstanding.
Right.
I would like to ask that we get an update on U-PASS, how well we're doing, if there's some things that need to be changed, you know, there's always comments on it's not working here. If we don't hear them, we don't know how to improve it. So if we can get an update on U-PASS, I'd appreciate that.
Happy to form a working group and then look into that with Dr. Wilson.
I'd like to applaud you as well, you know, without, you know, you all, not just expanding our footprint but solidifying it with your work, but your work's really important because without our students, there is no college.
Sure.
So really appreciate the work that you all have done and I applaud you and encourage you to keep it, keep it going because, you know, this college offers a lot of opportunity to improve people's destiny. So thank you so much.
Sure. Happy to do it. I know President Vietti will give an update soon about our partnership with the USD 500 and some of the great things we're doing there to expand that footprint and to solidify it and so.
And I neglected to mention that in my report, but our team has a joint meeting with USD 500, October 27th at 9 a.m. And we're looking forward to finalizing an MOU, talking about what's working well, what we could do better, and then lastly, exploring the feasibility of a joint strategic plan to meet the needs of USD 500 students. So stay tuned.
Any other questions we can help with?
Sir?
Any other question?
No.
Well, just again, our appreciation and one thing is the model of extending ourselves and going to potential students. And that is very significant to the point that of course, the Board and now and the Presidential Search isn't about necessarily having meetings on campus, but going out into the community so that the community understands how serious we are about their input into the process. And so, thank you for modeling this and hopefully all entities within our campus community are not only observing this and the success that that promotes, but will also follow suit in exercising that same model of going out and being a part of the communities that we serve.
Sure. I'd be remiss if I didn't say and mention Scott Kramer and some of the work that he's done around retention. That's another thing that you guys stressed on us. I'll let Dr. Wilson talk about some of the stuff that he's doing around the student survey and our non-returning students that we've worked in collaboration with and so.
Okay, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Dr. Terry.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Scott has also been going with that team that we talked about out to the high schools to help with the advising and the enrollment piece and the financial aid piece. But one of the things that the Retention Office has been doing is working with a small group to try to get some information out there about our services and, you know, what we provide as a college. Let me get to my little coin. They're looking at doing a booklet, so they're going to hopefully call it the Retention Resource or Retention Publications, have it in Spanish and in English and online. So they are still getting some of the data and some of the information for this, but they're working with a small group. I think Amanda is part of your group and who else is part of your group, guys? Tina is part of your group. There's a couple of them who are working together to be able to get this project finished and be able to share it. They're attending their, you know, typical advising mentoring, you know, committee groups and just really trying to work with the college in general to find out what we need to do to be able to fully support our students. So, that's it.
Very good. Any other questions?
Yes, if you can, appears there was a news broadcast on the women's basketball team and their outreach to Houston. Is that something you can talk about?
Honestly, I can't. And I don't know if anybody from athletics is here. Tony, do you know? Come on up.
I think that's a real good outreach and it was aired, which really highlights the spirit of our college and our athletics department.
Yeah, the women's basketball team, they donated basically gear that they were supposed to receive and t-shirts and everything to Coach Sampson down in University of Houston and his relief efforts. And I think it was Channel 41 did a report on that and in turn, and we also in the athletic department helped raise, just basically gathered goods for the people in Houston as well, and we sent them down with some connections that we had locally. So, but yeah, it was a really good effort on our student athletes' part to volunteer their own stuff to aid in the efforts down there, so.
Just want to applaud you on that effort. Thank you.
All right, yes.
Yeah, friend issues.
Friend issues.
Great, great, great. Well, please extend our appreciation on behalf of the Board to the team.
Move approval of the Student Affairs' report.
There's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Information Services' report, I understand that Dr. Baz is still on leave, but we do have a strategic plan presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's me again.
It's you, yeah.
I do have an update on our strategic plan, and as you know, I get really excited about data and institutional effectiveness. I also get really excited about strategic planning. And Dr. Baz and I put this together and as you said, unfortunately, he couldn't be here. He's still out on leave. I did ask him if I could do a life-size cardboard cutout, but for some reason, he said no.
No.
I know, right? Okay. So just real quickly to review the strategic plan, we have four strategic pillars that I think everybody is pretty familiar with, and we have five strategic directions. So the pillars, I think, are pretty well-known. The directions, maybe not so much, but we do have them. And under each of the directions, we have goals and strategies and outcomes. So I think it's time to kind of pick up on what all the great things that's happening in enrollment management is we really need to start celebrating our successes and really applaud the efforts of what we're doing. So with that, strategic direction one, goal 1.2 was to increase the number of dual and concurrent high school students enrolled at KCKCC. Since fall 2014, we've increased our high school enrollment 86%. And not only do we need to celebrate and recognize all the efforts of the folks at Kansas City Kansas Community College, but we also need to recognize the efforts of the folks at the high school to do that and celebrating our success. So this is something that we really need to get the word out that we've done this. This is awesome. This is amazing. But it didn't happen by accident. We intentionally did, implemented some strategies to increase enrollment. Another success story, strategic direction one, goal 1.3, increase the number of Hispanic students enrolled at KCKCC. Since academic year 2014, we've increased that 13%. So I think we need to celebrate that. Strategic direction four, goal 1.4 was we were going to establish the Center for Teaching Excellence, which we did, I believe, last January, if I'm correct. So we need to celebrate that too. And also, as a part of the Fall in Service, there was group discussions held and they were asked to select one of the strategic pillars and they were asked to respond to three specific questions. And that information was collected through a Survey Monkey. And what I did is I took that, analyzed it for content, see what the emerging themes were. So the first question is, was what is our group most proud of regarding KCKCC's efforts and impacts? So for those folks who decided to focus on the recruit, enroll, retain, and goal attainment, they were most proud of the support that Kansas City Kansas Community College provides its students. So that's awesome, right? There's this whole, and that is an emerging theme, so that theme was common throughout all of the comments. Institutional vibe, people were very proud of all of the infrastructure updates that are going on around campus. Communication, those groups were most proud of our college community and the community outreach that we're doing. And the person-to-person groups were really most proud of our student successes. Forward movement. So there are some areas with the strategic plan where we are moving forward. We haven't totally reached the goal yet. Part of that is we need to still develop some of our outcomes. So strategic direction two and strategic direction three is enhance the overall enrollment process and improve student retention, which we've already talked about this morning, some of the awesome work that these folks are doing in that direction. And I did meet with Dr. Terry last week and he has a pretty awesome strategic enrollment plan. So what we need to do now is figure out how we can meld that and mesh that into our current strategic plan, because I think we need to leverage all these wonderful things that we're doing, develop some strategies around that and include that in our strategic plan. We're doing some really good things. That needs to be incorporated into our strategic plan. Strategic direction number three, goal 3.3, increase in student satisfaction. We kind of stopped doing student surveys for a while, but we're going to ramp that back up again. We're going to be doing the Ruffalo and Noel Levitz in spring, probably right before, right after spring break. We're not sure yet, but that's on my radar. And also-
Karen, will you then set a regular survey schedule?
Yes. What we are thinking about doing is Noel Levitz and Sessi are really the two premier satisfaction and engagement instruments. So we're going to be doing Noel Levitz in 18, then we'll do Sessi in 19 and start doing that. I've also thought about maybe not doing them each year because it takes time for things to change and can you really expect a lot of things to change in one year? Can you expect to move the needle on one of those surveys in a year's time? So we're going to definitely do Noel Levitz and then Sessi and then see what we need to do from there on. Strategic direction five, goal 4.2, employee satisfaction from a campus climate survey. And I was so glad to hear the candidates yesterday talk about this because I get excited when people want to use data, of course. So, so one of the things that we were talking about was we haven't done a campus climate survey or an organizational climate survey in a few years. And I was pleased to hear that they recommended to have an outside firm come in and do that because I think one of the things, we've done it internally historically, and a lot of people wouldn't respond or they didn't feel like they could respond honestly about our campus climate because it was done internally. So I think that's a really great direction to go and I'm really excited, hopefully I get to work with them on which survey and which firm we use.
I can guarantee it.
Okay. Okay. Also, with forward movement, also at the in-service, one of the questions asked, what are your hopes and aspirations to ensure a bright future for Kansas City Kansas and the students we serve? And the recruit, enroll, retain, goal attainment folks, one of the themes was they want to aspire to promote Kansas City Kansas Community College current and future academic and technical programs. So that's something that they, I know we're doing a lot in that area, but those folks want to do more of that. Institutional vibe, folks want improved, effective, and transparent communication, which I think we're working on. Communication, they want, those groups want, one of the themes that emerged from those groups was they want to improve our community outreach. We're doing a lot of great things in that area, but they see that we can improve that. Person-to-person, it was really interesting, but there was a lot of great ideas, but there were no common themes that kind of rose to the top with that group, which happens a lot of times when you do qualitative research. And then, one of the other forward movement questions was, they were, what role as individuals can we play in achieving those hopes and aspirations? Developing community relationships and improved communication was a theme that emerged. Institutional vibe, there was a lot of talk about having a positive attitude. You know, we're going places, we're doing things, we're doing great things, so let's keep those positive attitudes going. So, now, what's next? As I mentioned, I think it's time, we've had this strategic plan, we've been implementing this strategic plan for a couple of years now. I think it's time for us to review and refine it, again, celebrate our successes for goals that have been achieved and, but those goals that we've achieved, they don't go away. I like to think that we just park them over here and we keep on keeping on. We keep doing what we're doing. We still have those as goals, but maybe those aren't the focal point of our refined strategic plan. Maybe we put something else in the place of those. We need to review and see if the goals are still appropriate and aligned with our mission and vision. Do we need additional goals? Maybe so, because we're doing a lot of great things now. Do the current goals need to be tweaked? And we also need to align the strategic directions with our K-BOR Performance Agreement. And I don't know how many people are familiar with the fact that we actually have a performance agreement with K-BOR. There's some overlap with our strategic plan. My personal opinion is I would like to see those be aligned so we're not moving in- in, the idea of a strategic plan is that we're all moving in a strategic, intentional direction. And if we've got performance goals here with our strategic plan, and performance goals that were responsible to the state, we're moving in too many directions. That's my opinion. So, um, there is some overlap, but we, um, just submitted, uh, I think it was this summer? Did we submit? It was in July. We submitted our new strate, our performance agreement, and that goes for three years. So, um, how are we gonna fit that in with our overall strategic plan is something that we need to talk about.
Did you see some, uh, gap that you would bring to the board's attention?
Well, I think, um, so, as you can see here, um, increase the number of Hispanic students enrolled at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, that's still in our performance agreement. We, so we need to have a conversation about whether or not we still need to, I don't know if we can change, we could talk to Kbor and change the performance agreement, probably not. Um, but one of the things is the success rate in non-developmental courses. I'm not sure that that is a strategy that has really been developed in our strategic plan. So maybe that's one area that we wanna tweak in our strategic plan. Because we're not, if you don't have a strategy, and you don't have intentional things that are happening, initiatives that are happening, you can't expect that needle to move by chance. So you can't hold yourself accountable to Kbor saying, we're going to increase the success rate in non-developmental courses by students who were successful in developmental courses, if you aren't strategically, intentionally doing something to affect that increase.
If I could chime in for a minute, I do see a window of opportunity to align the strategic plan and the Kbor performance agreement when your permanent new president arrives. Because that's leverage to go to Kbor and say, I have worked with the internal and external community, here is the direction we need to head. Please, may we adjust our performance agreement.
That's, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of the hope. And, and if they say no, then we kinda take a step back and, and try and incorporate these. Now, there, like I said, there is some overlap, so we need to, I think, just have those discussions on how we can better align the performance agreement with our strategic plan. Um, because like I said, if we've, if we've got too many balls in the air, we're gonna lose focus, I think. So, um, that's just my personal opinion. I'll get off my-
Can I just make an observation also? On those Kbor goals, they're all focused around success and completion, I mean, right in the line. When you were going through our strategic plan, I didn't see much about success and completion. And I think that's been, I mean, there's a lot of things about facilities, with a lot of things about recruiting, and all that's great. I mean, I appreciate and applaud what you're doing. But it doesn't seem like we have focused on the other end, the outcomes. And I would hope, and I think we talked about this one time before, that you would help us identify, one, what success is. Is that the next slide?
Sort of.
Well, I just think it's a-
Trustee Daniels, you're always the guy that's like one step ahead.
Kbor is expecting the colleges to be successful, the students be successful. That's what we expect.
Right.
And I don't think any of us could say we're satisfied with the success rate of our college. We've got a lot of things going, but I don't think we'd say we're satisfied with it. So I just think as we look at the strategic plan, and as we move forward, I think there needs to be a lot more focus and emphasis on that issue.
Right.
Student success and completion.
Well, and I know we've talked about that before, is how, how do we define success?
That's right.
Now, we've got a lot of outside entities that like to define it for us. Um, but unfortunately, some of those definitions don't fit-
Absolutely.
-with what we see as our student success.
Yeah.
Um, so I think this is an opportune time, when we're reviewing and refining our strategic plan, to have those conversations.
Absolutely.
So I think our, part of what our next step is, is to decide if we wanna stick with our current goals. What are, there are some goals around student success, but they're not really defined, they're not really strategic. So I think we need to further expand on that. And, um, our strategies that are in the strategic plan, I think we need to take them to another level. Just like we kicked IR up a notch to IE, I think we need to kick our strategies up a notch in our strategic plan, and actually detail specific action steps. What are we going to do to increase enrollment or some, you know, specific action steps? This is what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
We're gonna have SOAR, we're gonna do all these things. And then, we need to figure out a way, who's gonna implement that? So we need to assign workload, we need to assign responsibility, maybe have implementation teams, as Dr. Terry and I were, were talking about. Um, but the other thing is, we need to establish benchmark, benchmarks and outcomes. That's an area where I think we can really improve in our strategic planning efforts, is figure out where we are now, where do we wanna be? And put measurable outcomes to those things in our strategic plan.
I think it's important for the board, because once, if we, when we really began to focus on that student success, it's, it could affect budget, it could affect facilities, it could affect technology. It's the kind of thing the board, number one, we just need to know how successful our students are being.
Right.
But number two, what are the implications of that as we move those initiatives forward as far as decisions the board has to make?
Right.
So thank you for your help.
Yeah, I totally agree. And that's a conversation I think we'll have, just in general, about what is student success? What does student success mean to us at Kansas City, Kansas Community College?
Exactly.
Um, it goes way beyond graduation rate. It goes way beyond-
That's right.
Employ, those things are important, but goal attainment is also important, because we get so many students that just come here to take one class.
Yeah.
And they, they transfer back, or, or, but they attain their goal, so that's a success for us, I think.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for your work on it and emphasis on it. I know we have, everybody on this campus interested in that issue and wanting to work on it, so.
Yep. Well, I'm, I'm excited.
If I could chime in for a minute, and this is just my perspective. You are going to have an incoming new permanent president that will have a wow factor with capital letters. Uh, and that new president is going to want to put his or her handprints on helping to set the direction for KCK from this point forward. So, to, to my way of thinking, nothing is worse than having a plan right now, and then a new president coming in and say, wait a minute, we're going this direction, not this. So I really like the concept of focusing on student success this year.
Yes.
And allowing the new president that flexibility to work with the internal and external communities, then to flesh out the strategic plan.
Yeah, I agree.
And that, that kinda leads me into the, the last point here, is new faces, new ideas. Do we need to modify the committees, the committee structure? Do we need to expand membership? Because I really think, um, so many times why strategic plans are not successful is not everybody's involved in them. And I think we need to develop a culture of ownership. This is where we're going, this is what we've decided to do, and it's not a top-down. It's, it's more of a bottom, I, I don't like the word bottom, but it's more of the, the people who are doing the day-to-day things need to be involved in the strategic planning, because ultimately, they're the ones who are gonna help us move the needles.
And I do think that's one thing we can accomplish this year. President's Cabinet has talked about the current composition of this strategic plan steering committee. And from my perspective, it is much too narrow, uh, and it is very top-down. And we, we need people from all nooks and crannies of KCK, the doers, the thinkers, to join that group. And again, I think that's one thing we can accomplish this year, without taking anything away from the new incoming president's work.
Right.
Yeah, I think, too, that as you're looking at these listening sessions, and the importance that, that the previous advancement council, uh, really saw as their role, and did get updates on, on the previous, uh, strategic plan. That was a really important way to hear what they're thinking, but also feel like they're somewhat of, of a part of understanding that strategic plan and the direction, and taking that information back into their different communities in this community. So I think that is, that's gonna be a really important piece.
Great. Good.
All right. Are there any questions, further?
Yes, can you go back to the success slide for me? The successes.
This one?
Uh, I believe so, yeah. That's perfect. Um, and that's awesome, um, when you talk about the enrollment of, uh, high school students. I mean, that's, that's right on point. And I agree, that's something we need to tell. If you could just real quickly, um, with the, uh, the Hispanic population growing in, um, in our city and in our county, um, and it, you know, they're gonna be the drivers of fueling the success of, of local economies and, and our community, not just the community college. Just an example, when you talk about a strategic plan, um, to increase the number of enrolled Hispanics, can you, what, what does that entail? What does that look like? What, what was that strategy?
That's a little out of my wheelhouse.
Not your territory.
Okay.
So Tina and I can share, share, one of the things that we implemented this year is that we were very purposeful in about our hiring practices around making sure that we had folks that were bilingual, right? So that they can share that message with our students. We actually hired, uh, Martha at our front desk in our information center for admissions, and she's in the process of translating all of our admissions materials into Espanol. And she's doing that very purposefully, so that when we're out in the community that we have both that are available for students. She's also that first point of contact when you call KCKCC and you have questions about the admissions or enrollment process, you get Martha on the phone right away. And if you're a Spanish-speaking individual, if you're Hispanic, or if you're bilingual, you're able to talk to her right away. And so we were very purposeful about that, and we've looked at that across with our recruiting practices as well. And so that was one, one very important strategy that we took right away when we identified with Dr. Wilson and the team, that moving forward around our hiring practices for our information specialists up at the front.
And hiring is great. I guess, what I was looking for, and maybe, maybe this is something you're doing, but the Hispanic chamber.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the local community groups, uh, that have predominant Hispanic membership, such as, uh, CABA, the Central Avenue Betterment Association.
Right.
I mean, is one example. I don't know the extent that we're really reaching out, uh-
Sure.
-with some of our stakeholders, such as the Unified Government, Louisville Neighborhoods, and some of the individuals are there, um, to really, uh, increase that 13 percent, uh, to be more reflective of the growth potential-
Sure.
-that the Hispanic population's gonna have, as far as their impact, uh, on our economy here in Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County and abroad, as well as this community college.
Absolutely.
I think that, it's an awesome strategy, um, but, uh, and 13 percent, you know, that's great, um, but I think-
We've got more to do.
Yeah, there, I think that, that, that could really grow to a point that, uh, something to that 80, 86 percent range, and, and I think there's a lot of opportunity there. And so I was just curious as to what that strategy was.
There, there is, when I was writing, part of my responsibilities is I get to write the narrative for the performance agreement of why we were up or down, or, you know? Um, and when I reached out to Brian?
Brian?
By, Brian Patrick, I, I got a, a, a two-page list of what he was doing with outreach towards the Hispanic community. So that is, I'd be more than happy to share that with you. And also, um, you're limited to the, you can only do two pages on the performance agreement, so I couldn't put everything in. Um, but we could share the performance agreement narrative with the two. So I know we're doing things. Brian would be much more the appropriate person to speak to that.
I can give you two or three things that, that I know he's doing in that area. And that is, um, number one, we have Stephanie Marquez, who works for us, that does a lot of translation materials into Spanish. Um, number two, Brian's very involved with, um, the Hispanic Chamber and with BizFest, which, uh, we provide BizFest scholarships every year to students, and so we specifically market to Latino students to bring in to the college. Our, our, I'm sorry. And, yes, and, and he's on the Board of El Centro, and we started offering Spanish GED offerings, and we do a big ESL push for, uh, students in the region, and offer night courses, and, and not, I'm sorry, not students, for community members in the region that, that need help on, on picking up on their English skills. And that's happening out of Marissa Gray's area, and with, with, um, their, their units. And then, um, specifically into the high schools and the middle schools, you know, I, I, please, I ask all of you that are, that are here to come to our Saturday Academy, I'll get you the dates and make sure you have them, but, uh, that group continues in their, uh, our, our target market are minority students. So, um, both Latino and African-American populations, and those students come to our college. Um, 25 percent of the students that have come out of that project since we've started it in 99 continue to come to KCKCC, and 100 percent of those students go on to complete their bachelor's degree and graduate degrees. Actually, we're getting ready to try and write something up with, um, Kelly Rogie about students who have gone through Saturday Academy, come to the community college, and have gone on to med school. And so that's pretty, that's pretty telling of what we're trying to do, but we do see it as a thing that we have to improve, obviously. But we do have a lot of efforts that are working in.
And that, and that's great, I appreciate it. And I'm glad, it's, it's good to hear that, uh, you know, it's promising, I should say, to hear that you all have reached out to the Chamber, El Centro.
Yeah.
And, and my recommendation is reach further, deeper into these communities, uh, such as, you know, the historically Hispanic community in Argentina, uh, like I said, the Central Avenue area. I mean, there's a lot of, uh, great leaders down there that I know could help you be successful at achieving that goal. So I applaud you on, on really focusing on, not just Hispanics, but African-Americans as well, to give them that, uh, that opportunity for, uh, an improved destiny, like I always say.
Just being a historian on the trustees, uh, Dr. Alaric Hartabilli, uh, so I'm going back, back in time, nearly 12 years ago. We had a meeting, 'cause this was something that I have a vested interest in, and there was just over 500 Hispanic students when I became a trustee. And, uh, what we did is we gathered, uh, leaders in the Hispanic community, there were 23. And, uh, we met, and from that meeting came a number of ideas that have been executed through these 12 years to get us to where we're at. I think that there is, to, um, the trustee's point, probably a good idea, given, uh, the transition that the college will be going through, such a meeting again. Uh, and not only with the Hispanic community, but I would contend with the Black community as well. Because we should not believe that in order for one population to gain, it is at the detriment of another population. In fact, all can rise and, um, be benefactors to what we offer here at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. But we have to, uh, get, uh, all of the, uh, individuals that are at various levels of our community at the table, uh, so that we understand better of what their needs are, how we can have effective communication. Because while the translation is important, it's what we are translating that is more important. If the message still does not ring sincere, comforting, uh, value to, uh, the person, they, they're still not. Uh, so it's not just about the language, but it's about what we are in fact communicating. And this goes back, then, to how we define student success. And how we are promoting that they, oh, well, uh, you know, our old, uh, tagline, you know, make life better, uh, for them. And it isn't just about that we can save them some money, uh, before they go to the more expensive university, uh, level, but that we can in fact positively impact, uh, their lives now, currently. And then, give them a foundation to build on to other, uh, future opportunities. So I would encourage that such a, a plan, Dr. Kramer, uh, you know, moving forward and, and getting that kind of meeting, uh, and, and getting those voices, um, because I think it's, it's beneficial to us in this last decade, and I think in the, moving forward, it'll be beneficial again.
Absolutely. I, and I appreciate the, the opportunity to do it. I mean, it's, it's great that we are reaching out to these communities, and that we make a big impact in lives.
Yes.
I know last week, when we went to the gala event, the Hispanic Gala Chamber, that the student sitting next to me, she is in the automotive tech program here at the college, and that was pretty amazing to her. She was on a BizFest scholarship from Olathe, coming up and taking classes here. And she was telling her story, that she's in there-
Yes, she was.
-working on, you know, working with Richard Revel, and, um, doing, doing automotive, um, collision repair, and she loves it.
Mm-hmm.
And she thanks us for the scholarship to do it. So I appreciate it, and, um, and absolutely, I'll work to make sure that we make those efforts.
Two quick comments.
Two quick comments. One, I heard the superintendent of KCK Schools District the other day say that they have students that speak 70 different languages in the KCK School District. With their Diploma Plus program, we're just going to continue to get more and more of the KCK students. Now, I don't think we can translate 70 different languages, but it's certainly something we need to be aware of.
Right.
That, that's going to be a challenge for any institution, but I think we're going to see more and more students come in with lots of different languages. And secondly, I just remind you that there's a really active and growing Asian Chamber of Commerce right now, and we probably should be reaching out to that group and having some conversation with them.
Yeah.
Yep, appreciate it.
Yep.
And we will, and we will, by the way. I thank you for that.
Yes.
And we are, to some extent, too, but yes.
Yes.
We'll improve that.
We understand. All right, well, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for your report. Appreciate it. Appreciate the follow-up. Thank you.
Finance and Administration Services Report.
You know, I was sitting here thinking what would be the first words out of my mouth when I stand up here today, and then I looked at the report and I thought, what a tremendous, well, I almost said a breadth of responsibility, but, but the things that we get involved in, all the way from spiders up at the Pioneer Center to finding out if we have enough cash to cover the payroll next month, you know, so we, we cover a lot of things, and, you know, this is going to, this is my last meeting, so I want to make sure that I, I have an opportunity to say how much I appreciate the staff that I work with in, in the business and finance area. I mean, they, they have done a marvelous job. We've gone through a month or two of having some key people that left us and, and left a big hole, and we've been able to fill that and, and somehow managed to keep the, keep the ship on course. The report that I, that I have for you here tells you a little bit of what most of the departments are doing that I work with, but I have a few things I noted here that were not in the report that I thought would be of interest to you. And one would be the elevator and the Learning's Common Center, we'll be bidding that job out within the next 10 days. We finished up with the architect just actually yesterday, and so that is, that is moving ahead, and that was on the capital outlay budget we had for the year. And also, we'll have a major parking lot renovation coming up, and that'll, that'll be bid out in January, and they'll be starting on that in April, and we hope to run April, May, June, get it done by July 1. And so that's going to be in place, too, which will make a big difference on campus as far as the way directional, the direction traffic will flow. People involved in that, of course, have been security, physical plant, our architects, the finance committee, and a lot of thought has been put into it, because when you change how traffic flows, sometimes, you know, it doesn't go like you planned, but I think we have the right people around the table to do the best we can on that. You know, we've got a couple of opportunities coming up that the president mentioned earlier, we're going to have a new chief financial officer, we're going to have a new HR, human resource officer, and most likely a compliance officer, officer at some point down the road. And these are, these are great opportunities, because I, I think we're doing good, but I think we could do a lot better. I mean, when, when I look at this, say, what, what would I have liked to have accomplished that I didn't get done? I think we could have been, done a better job on financial statements. I think we could have had a little better information, but I think we've made some progress. I talked with Bill Miller, the auditor, this morning, and the audit's moving along. Like every audit, we'll have a management letter, and there'll be a few things in there that we'll be sharing with the finance committee and the board, saying, here's what we really can improve. But we'll keep moving ahead, I think with the right people in place, and I think Dr. Viati has done a wonderful job. It's been great to work with her the last couple of months. The HR office, I don't know whether you've been by there at all, but we opened that up dramatically from what it had been. We used to have a wooden door that had a handle that if you turned it like this, it didn't turn, you know, but if you, if you pushed it, you could come in. So it's almost like, you know, if you know the combination, you can get in that office. If you go up there and you're really unsure what you want, you go like this, you might leave, and, and that's, that's something we've changed. We've got a nice glass door in there, we've created some spaces where people can have private conversations with people in HR as far as benefits and payroll, and I think that's, that's been a positive move. We, we're doing a few things in the business office area to create a few more spaces that so we can give the people a, a good working environment, and we've added an assistant controller. So I think we're moving ahead. We're, we are kind of the behind the scenes, backstage people in the operation, but we take great pride in having the place clean and making sure that there's money in the bank and that we give you the information you need in order to, to service trustees. Are there any questions on the report?
Well, I just would like to add, I see Jeff is in the room, appearances matter. People do judge a book by the cover.
Yes.
And a, a door does communicate, whether you're inviting or not.
Right.
And a window that you can actually look through, see through, and a window that might as well be a wall, also communicates. And so Jeff, I want you to please share with your team our appreciation of their work in communicating the appropriate mission of our college is open and welcoming. Their work is just as important as any faculty members, any administrators, and sometimes I don't know that they recognize that, but it truly is. And I hope that you will let them know the comments this morning, because they're sincere, and I've always thought it, but maybe haven't communicated it enough, but do thank the staff for, for those efforts. Because I know we have this thing of remodeling a space, then coming back and remodeling a space, and coming back and remodeling the space, and so they probably wonder what the heck we're doing. But I think we're getting it right, and their patience and determination to do quality work, to make our decisions the best that they can be, is, is noticed and appreciated. And Bob will be saying a few words about you here in a few minutes, so I'm not going to say anything right now.
But I would like to say something. Never preempt the chair, so you get the words later, but I would be remiss if I did not give you my heartfelt thanks. You are one of the finest CFOs with whom I've had the privilege to work, and certainly the one with the best sense of humor.
Yeah, I got, I got a card the other day that said it was hilarious, but, you know, I never thought myself to be that funny.
Well, we, we cannot thank you enough for all you have done during your tenure at KC KCC, and you will be sorely missed.
It, it's been a, a privilege to serve, you know, I, I, you know, I've said this to so many people, I've met so many people I would have never met had I not had lunch with Dr. Gibbons one day and have her say, would you like to come up here and, and work for a few months? And I said, I, I would be glad to, you know, and those few months turned into three years. And they've been great years, because I, I, I would have had a, kind of a hole in my life if I wouldn't have met all those people around here. It's been great. And Wyandotte County, see, I'm like one block below, below County Line Road. And when I moved into Kansas City, I never knew there was this county line road issue, but it is, it's there and it's real, and I'm, I'm glad that I'd come over the county line road.
Bob, I'd like to say thank you as well. A short time I've been on the Board, you've given me real good information, especially me being on the finance committee, just keeping me informed, so I really appreciate that, and really just keeping us in line on, from the finance committee, you know, within our budgetary, you know, constraints as being fiduciaries here on, at this Board. I know our, our Chair talked briefly about it, and I like our President, in, in line with the budgeting, and our, our Chair is correct, you know, we, we know we've got awesome students, we know we've got above par staff here that do an excellent job, but appearance is everything. We want our, our institution to look the part of having great programs and great staff, and I know you mentioned the elevator and you mentioned the HR, but, and the parking lot, but I spoke to the President, and there's some great things that have come out of the, the finance committee through staff support that this Board has, has approved. And if you could just talk about some of those things that the community can expect, President, on just moving forward, and some of the great things that, that, that's going to compound on top of the, the improvements that already have been done that you can see, but moving forward as we go into 2018, if you could just talk about some of the things that the community can expect.
Well, I'm happy to do that, and if I misspeak, I will rely on Bob and Jeff, but in my mind, it falls under the descriptor of campus beautification, and so we are looking at new, no, no, we will be moving forward with new marquee signs, we will be moving forward with exterior building signage that lights up at night, because we know that is important to at least one Board member, likely all of them. We will look at upgrading our landscaping, painting the exterior buildings, restuck, stuck going where we need to, so that first, the first impression of anyone coming to campus is one of a well-cared-for college, and the message is, of course, then we care well for our students and our broader community. What did I leave out of that?
No, I think, I think that's, I think you've covered it all. I think the one thing you'll, you'll notice, we're going to move the flags from where they are now.
Yes.
And put them up where the, the entrance is coming into admissions, kind of making people say, well, where those flags are, that's where the main entrance is, and so they'll be flowing in there. So I think, and that was Jeff Sixter's idea, that was a great idea, you know, I mean, and it's really inexpensive, and we'll be able to do that and draw focus to the center of the building, rather than down at the, down at the far end here.
And one thing I, excuse me, Bob, but to add to what the President's list was, and it's been talked about in committee, and that, and what was also in the athletic director's report, the training facility, and, you know, it's not off the radar, because that is something that impacts the students directly. And we don't want the reputation of having the most unsafe facility in the conference, that's not, that's not what Kansas City, Kansas Community College is about, and so it's taking some time to figure it out, but only through discussions can solutions be derived. And so we continue to have those, and Bob has been very helpful in, in, in making sure that within the budget, to the trustee's point, that we can afford, but something that will be lasting and something that will, you know, be a stable moving forward, so we are, we are also with thinking on that. So are there any other questions about the report?
Hey, Bob, I had a, you may not off the top of your head here, but under expenses, supplies and other operating expenses, September to September was $680,000 less this year, and right below utilities were $70,000 more this year. Do you have any idea what, is that a timing issue, or?
You're talking about the expert report?
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked, our kilowatt hours are down, the price per kilowatt is up, and that, I'm sure that's rate increases.
Okay.
I, I was going to just make that statement, our, our kilowatt usage for eight of the nine months of this year is down.
Down, yeah.
But the BPU charges are up seven of the nine months.
Yeah.
And this last month was from 11.17 cents to 14.45. So even with the less usage, when they, they, they're compensating for our saving energy by raising their prices, I, I, you know, it, it feels that way, I'm sure it is not a conspiracy, but, but I, I continue, though, to be very proud of the staff, of the lower usage, it is important, and for eight of the nine months being able to do it, and I mean significantly down, Bob can verify that, but the costs have also gone up significantly the majority of the month.
Seventy thousand dollars is a significant increase.
Yeah.
Bob, and what about the, the supplies and other operating expenses, there's $600,000 down, which is good, I guess, but, or are we just not using as many supplies, or, I mean, that's a pretty significant.
No, I, I, no, actually, a lot of that is timing.
Yeah, I wondered about timing.
Yeah, a lot of it is timing, and we've been doing a lot of things, a lot of repairs and maintenance, and we're doing a lot of it with our own people. You know, last year, you recall, we did lots of things, we contracted a lot of things out, and all the work being done in the Human Resource Office is being done with Jeff's crew. I mean, we have very talented people that are able to go and do that. Sometimes we pay some overtime, but compared to what it, what it costs you to bring someone from the outside in, we're still way ahead of the game on it.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's why. Nothing alarmed you, though, I mean, nothing's alarming you about where we are?
Yeah.
No.
Obviously?
No. Well, some of it was projected in our cash flow analysis and that.
There's, there's an age thing, I don't always hear everything you say.
Well, Bob, I'm the same way, I'm about your age, I don't hear what you say either.
It is amazing when you sit around in a group and, and you're getting the idea of what's going on, but you don't always hear every word, and then, and then you sort of draw conclusions and hope you hit a target.
What'd you say?
You draw appropriate.
Thanks, Bob.
I told, I needed hearing.
Conclusions, uh, uh.
Thank you.
Conclusions, Bob. Motion to accept the financial report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under unfinished business, that will be an executive session item, and then will come out, may or may not have action, we, we won't know until the discussion. New business, under new business, I am forced to read this letter from trustee Brydenthal. And the letter is addressed to Chairman Rios. It is with much regret that I submit my resignation to the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board of Trustees effective November 8, 2017. We are moving to Houston to join our children and grandchildren. It has been a privilege to serve, representing the community as a trustee, and an honor to represent the college in the community. I truly believe we make lives better by working together. Sincerely, Kathy Brydenthal. I need a motion to accept the resignation of trustee Brydenthal.
I move approval with regrets.
Motion to approve with regret, second?
Second.
Is moved and seconded. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And the motion.
Just so that there's one, Kathy. Just so that there's one.
The motion carries. We are adjusting our proceedings to have a reception, to honor trustee Brydenthal for her service to the Board of Trustees and to the Kansas City, Kansas Community College community, and also to recognize the dedication of Mr. Robert Layton over these last three years, and his service for the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. We will have a reception that will take place in the back of this room, and then we will have to come back into session to go into executive session, but we wanted to have the reception first so that everybody could enjoy that, and if you choose to stay around for all the executive sessions we're going to have, that's, that's, that's fine. I do want to publicly. I do want to publicly, Bob, I know you say, you know, that we can improve in our reports and that and the finances, but again, being the old timer on the board, I know when we used to scratch our heads, we didn't know what we had or didn't have. You know, we just took someone's word and crossed our fingers and moved on. There has definitely been much more shared with the board and with the college as a whole in the budgeting process, in the breakdown of our finances. There has just been a very professional method to our financial structure as you have come on board. And so we cannot thank you enough for the service that you have provided. You have certainly laid a solid foundation from which we can do the dashboard that you talked about. And I'm sure that that's going to come to fruition, but it couldn't have if we didn't have that, the data that we know we need in order to make rational decisions on moving this college forward. So we thank you very much for your service to the Kansas City-Kansas Community College. Trustee Brightenthal, it's unfair that you're saying your reason for leaving is children and grandchildren. So it's hard for us in our business then to be opposed to your going.
That's why I stated it.
But trustee Brightenthal's impact as a trustee will be everlasting. And it will be because of her conviction and dedication to ensuring that there is community input into all things Kansas City-Kansas Community College. She has definitely been the strongest advocate, though we all believe in what she's advocated. I believe her voice has been the strongest in stating over and over again that we must listen to the community and that we must respond to the needs of the community. And her professional life in Wyandotte County has been about listening and serving the needs of the community. It's been an honor and pleasure to have served with Kathy as a fellow trustee. I have had many opportunities in the past to work with her when I was an educator and administrator in the Kansas City-Kansas Public Schools. But as a trustee, you know, we get to know each other, I think, very well and understand our passions, understand how we're all trying to work together as a team to positively impact lives of folks that we don't know necessarily, but are important to us. And Kathy, over and over again, continues to be that voice of those individuals that we may not always see, but we know are there and we know it is important that the Kansas City-Kansas Community College exists to give those individuals that hand up and that handshake of it's an equal deal to have them position themselves in such a way that they can provide for themselves and their families and that we are able to provide a quality service. And for that, Kathy, I say on behalf of the board, thank you for your dedication and service. As I said, it will be everlasting. At this time, I call for a motion to temporarily adjourn so that we may have the reception. Motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And we go to the back for a reception. I reconvene the Board of Trustees meeting. And we will be going into, just so the audience is aware, two executive sessions. But due to the new law, we will call for one exec session and then we have to come back and then we'll let you know about the second exec session. Then we'll come back. If there's any action, we'll take that or if not, we'll adjourn. The first executive session is to discuss a non-eligible personnel matter exemption, KSA 75-4219B2, for the protection of individuals to be discussed in consultation with the college attorney. We will need 10 minutes, so it is 11:41. So we will start the exec session at 11:42 and come back at 11:52. Motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And we are adjourned to our first exec session. Thank you. I reconvene the Board of Trustees meeting. We are needing to go back into executive session for the same topic for consultation with the college attorney exemption, KSA 75-4219B1, for the protection of individuals to be discussed. We'll need 10 minutes. It's 12:37, so we'll say 12:38. We'll come back at 12:48. Motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And we're back in exec session until 12:48. I reconvene the October Board of Trustees meeting. I do have a very sad information that I've received. Very loyal former employee, just recently retired, Joyce Dotson, from our bookstore. I've been informed, has passed. And I, it's incredibly, incredibly unfortunate. So I do want to send condolences to her family and friends. She was a valued member of our KCKCC team and still looked at her as such even in retirement. And I know that she's in a better place for what she did with her life while she was here. So just please be on the lookout for information regarding services and the like for Joyce. There is no action and so I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And we stand adjourned.